Hafa Daye and good morning. The Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing is now called to order. Today is Thursday, June 30th, 2022, and the time is 9:10 a.m. Notices for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all media broadcasting outlets on Wednesday, June 22nd, 2022, and again on Tuesday, June 28th, 2022. Again, today is Thursday, June 30th, 2022. The following item will be heard for this morning's public hearing. Bill Number 298-36 LS, introduced by Talina Cruz Nelson and Jose Pedro Terlahi. This is an act to amend Section 4A of Public Laws 34-70 and 35-44 relative to the financing or refinancing improvements and capital improvements of the Jose D. Leon Guerrero Commercial Port and other related facilities and operations of the port through revenue bond proceeds. A fiscal note for Bill Number 298-36 LS was requested on April 26, 2022. It was received and disseminated to all senators via email by the Committee on Rules on April 29th, 2022. We have now testifying on behalf of Bill Number 298-36 LS on the panel, former Senator and General Manager of the Port Authority Rory Raspicio and Melanie Mendiola, the Director of GIDA. I want to state for the record and remind everyone on the general rules for the public hearing. The conduct of the public hearing shall be as follows. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Those testifying will be allowed to present oral testimony. Once you're done, please remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony as may be desired by members of the committee. Question and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individuals testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceeding. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and may be asked to leave or be escorted and removed from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. And I will ask people when they speak to also just restate your name and title for the record. At this time, I'd like to thank my colleagues for attending this morning's hearing. I'd like to thank Senator Chris Duñez, Senator James Moylan, Senator Talina Nelson, and Senator Telo Taidegui. I'm going to now ask, and Senator Brown has just entered the room, so welcome Senator Brown. Thank you for being here. I'd now like to invite Senator Talina Nelson to provide an opening statement on the bill. Senator Nelson?
Buenos en hafa day, everyone, General Manager Raspicio, GIDA Administrator Mel Mendiola, and those that are here on behalf of Bill Number 298-36. Bill Number 298-36 LS is an act to amend Section 4 Alpha of Public Laws 34-70 and 35-44 relative to the financing or refinancing improvements and capital improvements of the Jose D. Leon Guerrero Commercial Port and other related facilities and operations of the port through revenue bond procedures. On December 7th, 2017, Public Law 34-70 was passed and saw the port obtain 71,445,000 in revenue bonds to refinance, to finance their modernization program specifically to finance certain capital improvements and to refinance all or a portion of outstanding loans of the Port Authority of Guam. As the Port Authority continued their work in modernization, they found the need to address shortfalls in various areas, such as deficiencies in port's revenue generating facilities, the need for a connectivity fuel line between Gulf Pier and F-1 Pier, and needed improvements to their information systems. On October 7th, 2019, Public Law 35-44 was passed, which amends Public Law 34-70 by authorizing the reprogramming of the Port Authority revenue bond proceeds and amending capital improvement projects detailed in Section 4 Alpha of 34-70. In procuring architectural and engineering designs for the revenue bond projects, the Port Authority of Guam found that the construction costs exceed those outlined in the public laws aforementioned, and that the revenue bond updates obtained back in 2014 are now severely underfunded. Since then, the port has actively sought out federal grants. Very good job to Mr. Raspicio to help fund said projects, with the port even reaching out to my office for letters of support in obtaining such grants. However, due to the past legislations that outline the revenue bond projects, the port may be unable to exceed the costs specified in Public Laws 34-70 and 35-44, ultimately making the grants awarded to them unusable for their modernization efforts. This bill seeks to amend the affirmation of public laws by removing the legislative funding gaps tied to the 2018 revenue bonds. Through this act, the port will be able to move freely in their modernization efforts and the vision of the island to modernize the commercial port. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. And at this time, I'd like to call on Melanie Mendiola to provide testimony. And Melanie, if you have anyone from GIDA present, your staff, please also introduce them.
Nope, I'm flying solo today. Thank you, Senator. All right.
Your name for the record, please, and your title. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Hafa Daye, Madam Chair, and members of the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing. My name is Melanie Mendiola, and I'm the Administrator/CEO of the Guam Economic Development Authority. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of Bill 298-36, an act to amend Section 4A of Public Laws 34-70 and 35-44 relative to the financing or refinancing improvements and capital improvements of the Jose D. Leon Guerrero Commercial Port and other related facilities and operations of the port through revenue bond proceeds. The Guam Economic Development Authority and its role as the central financial manager and consultant for the government of Guam monitors and advises the government on financial options that can best support and achieve certain goals and objectives. We thank the sponsors of Bill 310-36, who introduced this bill, as it reflects the reality of growing costs of goods and services in today's market. We have verified with bond counsel that the removal of the individual project amounts will not impact existing bond covenants, as neither the Port's Bond Act nor GIDA's 50103K statute requires this level of detail. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to provide support of Bill 310-36. Should you have any questions, please contact me at 6474332 or via email at mel.mendiola@investguam.com. And as in addition to my testimony, I just wanted to mention that our communication with bond counsel was via email. There was not an official opinion provided, as we did not ask for it as of yet, and our bond counsel was going through some personal difficulty. But we can, if that, what the port would like, or we can just forward the communications with bond counsel. Either are fine.
Ms. Mendiola, I just want to confirm with you. We are discussing Bill Number 298-36, correct, with regard to the Port Authority of Guam, because you had mentioned 310, and I just want to make sure that your testimony and support...
298-36, thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, 298-36. I thought so, because you were speaking, you're speaking as though you were referring to the Port Authority bill, but you had mentioned the other numbers, so I just want to put that on the record.
Yes, this is, I believe, a typo. We were preparing for two hearings today. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. So noted that your testimony is in favor of 298-36. And so I'd like to now call upon former Senator Rory Raspicio to provide testimony. And Mr. Raspicio, if you can also introduce members of the port who have joined you today, although they're not testifying, but just for my purposes, I'd like you to introduce your team that you have with you also.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. First, I'll also thank you for the hearing. I want to thank our Oversight Chair Senator Nelson for sponsoring the bill and her opening remarks, and Senators Moylan and Senator Duñez, and former General Manager Brown. Senator Brown and Senator Telo Taidegui, good morning. With me today are Dominic Munha, Deputy General Manager Louis Baza, the other Deputy General Manager. We have our Chief Planner Joe Havlana, our CIP Coordinator Clarence Legutang, who comes to us from NAFAC. He managed over a billion dollars' worth of CIP projects, so we're very happy he's with us at the port. Our longtime fixture at the port, Ms. Vivian Leon, she's corporate services, but she's also been doubling in her role as Acting Division Head for Commercial, and someone who is really very good with the finances, Mr. Jojo Gavera. He's our chief, almost a chief financial officer, but he's a controller. And we're very happy, I'm very happy to be joined by this team, and we're very happy to be here at this hearing. I did provide a written testimony regarding the bill, but I think I would be doing a disservice to the community and those who are listening if I simply read the testimony. I want to say that where we're at today is a journey that we've undertaken the last three and a half years, and it's a journey to somewhere. And senators, we try to stay within the original revenue bond structure through statute, but recognizing early on, beginning as early as December 2018, during the transition period, the incoming Leon Guerrero administration recognized that in the modernization efforts of the port, what was severely lacking was the lack of attention that needed to be placed on the WARFs. And so if you look at how this revenue bond is structured and how it's to be paid and what projects were identified, nowhere in these initial list included the WARFs. And so we worked with our board. They passed a resolution authorizing me to get the governor's support. We worked with our Oversight Chair to have legislation to restructure the revenue bond proceeds. And so instead of demolishing an administration building and having a budget of 17.5 million for that building and the annex, what we did together is we brought that down to 10.5 million, and the balance of 7 million, the legislation said, take it to address F1, to address the financial management system, terminal operating system, and take it to address the field connectivity line. But if you add up all those four projects, it's well beyond 7 million, but we took what we can get. And so thankfully, the legislature said, go back to your board and let your board authorize what the priorities are going to be. And Senator Nelson is absolutely correct. Ma'am, you recognize that our first go-to is not port funds, our first go-to is not revenue bond funds, our first go-to is federal funds. And so we applied for a $3.1 million grant through planning, through the Economic Development Authority, that would establish a field connectivity line connecting Gulf Pier with F1 to provide redundancies and resiliencies. And so then we budgeted 2.5 million for the financial management system, and so the new FMS has been online, and we still have the terminal operating system and F1. To address F1, we were successful in getting an 18.1 million dollar grant from MARAD to rehabilitate F1 through F6, and that's an 80-20 match, so we have about, it's 22 million, I'm sorry, we have about 5 million from port funds that we have to identify to match that grant, but that's going to be 22 million dollars' worth of work from F1 to F6. And in the Hotel WRF project, what was really been an impediment to us with our procurement is we've had all these projects listed, all the amounts for public inspection. And so when the bidders came to bid, first time around, we had 22 prospective bidders, and resulted in zero submissions. And so what we did through procurement is we surveyed all the 22 potential bidders and said, tell us what your issues were. And what came back to us was that the cost of the project far exceeded what was available budgetarily, and so they weren't even interested. So what we needed to do, instead of coming back to the legislature and say, can you just lift all the caps, we wanted to see what the actual amounts would amount to based on the submissions of these bids. So we went back to the board, and we asked the board to pass a resolution, giving me authority as General Manager to tap unrestricted funds, tap grants, to do whatever's necessary to bridge that potential shortfall, because in procurement, your requisition can't go through unless you have the money to back it up. And so that was one angle that we were chasing. They passed a resolution authorizing me to do that, so we can proceed with the procurement. And so after working with our construction manager and our CIP division, we went back out to bid, and thankfully, we got a sole bidder, one submission of Sumitomo Construction, and the price came in at 59 million. 59 million for a $24 million budgeted project. And so what I asked the negotiating team to do is find out in what areas we can defer that we don't need to do right now because of funding. And so they were able to take it from 59 million, and then we had it in two phases, 59 down to about 46. First phase was 38 million, and then second phase is 8 million. First phase will focus on the rehabilitation of the WRF. Second phase is the electrical conduits and the side work. And so 38 million for a $24 million budget, and part of that 24 million, 10 million, will come from the Tiger Grant. And that Tiger Grant, there's timelines attached to that. We have to have a substantial completion by August of 2024 for this entire project. So in discussing these things with MARAD and what our challenges have been, we're very upfront with them, and we said this 10 million dollars that the port committed to receiving is for the WRF, for the concrete slab, and for the road. The governor's been very successful in working with DPW Director Vince Ariola and Federal Highway. There's a $3 million commitment to take care of the road. And so in response to telling MARAD that, they said, oh, we might have to deduct the 3 million from the 10 million, but, you know, we're not certain. So our subsequent meetings with MARAD basically had them telling us that they're open to just de-scoping, because we said, in retrospect, we should have applied the 10 million just for the WRF work, because if you're going to do 10 million for the WRF, the concrete slab, and the road, in this, in the case that Federal Highway's doing the road, we can't control when Federal Highway is going to move on this. So MARAD agrees that they're leaning toward de-scoping the road, and they're leaning toward just having a concrete slab, and in the end, we would just end up with the rehabilitated WRF, and that's a victory in and of itself. But the challenge is, we still had 38 million with a $24 million budget, and then you have to subtract what the costs were for the CM services. And so in the 38 million shortfall, we were, if you apply the 20 million, that's 18 million. So the governor thankfully allocated 15 million dollars from the American Rescue Plan money with instruction to the port that this is an economic recovery tool. You're going to get 15 million dollars from ARP funds with the promise of not raising the tariffs for two fiscal years. And so that was the condition of receiving those monies. We took the entire 15 million dollars, applied it to the 38 million dollar shortfall, and then we've identified 3 million in next fiscal year and 3 million from CIPs in the following fiscal year, and we're tapping about 5 million in the reserve funds for this revenue bond funded project. And so we presented this to the board in two phases, and there's a lot of moving pieces, right? There's things that are happening beyond our control. For instance, this project is subjected to Buy American. We're told that if it weren't subject to Buy American Act, and we don't have to procure steel and bollards from a Buy American compliant area, U.S. area, the price of steel and availability of steel, it would be not only cheaper, but instead of having to wait 18 months, we can get it in six months. And if we didn't have to comply with Buy American, we'd probably have a savings of 68 million. And so we're before MARAD right now, also asking for a waiver from the Buy American, but we just can't task wait. We can't pause and say, oh, we're not going to do anything until we get the Buy American, oh, we're not going to do anything until... So if it appears that we've been extremely unorganized, I'm assuring you that we're organized, and it's our dysfunction that makes us functional, and it's our dysfunction because of the circumstances and the situation that we continually find ourselves in. So we went before the board, and we told them, we're breaking this up in two phases. Our area of concentration is the WRF and the Phase Two of the 8 million. If we get the Buy American Act and we save money on Phase One, that money will be poured into Phase Two. If in the end, the revenues don't look good and we can't do Phase One right away, we have, the contract is designed with Sumitomo, that we have one year to tell them if we're going to do Phase Two or not. So we're not bound by this entire amount. And so if we, we went before the PUC, and the PUC unanimously approved the award for this project, and now we have this bill before the legislature, before your honorable senators, to lift all of these funding caps for each project, because there are items in this project, in our professional opinion, working with the consultants, that these projects could be deferred. For instance, there's 10.5 million dollars that's available for the administration building and an annex. We're told that we probably need about 2 million dollars to rehabilitate the administration building, address concrete spalling, extend the service life for, you know, the minimum five years. And the balance of 8 million, senators, I wouldn't do an annex at this time. I would take the 8 million dollars and I would throw it over to the shortfall that we have for Hotel WRF. That could fund Phase Two, so we don't have to tap into port revenues for fiscal years 2023 and 2024, that's about 6 million dollars. But if we get the Buy American Act waived and their savings, then we could apply those savings to Phase Two, but I still wouldn't build an annex. I would take the 8 million and use it to cover over some of the other shortfalls in the other CIP projects. For instance, we have Warehouse One that came in, and it was well beyond what the breakdown was, so we canceled that bid. Then we have the EQMR building that came in at 1.4 million more than what was budgeted, but we proceeded with this bid award pledging unrestricted funds to cover the balance, to move the procurement forward, to get the board to approve it, to get PUC to approve it. But what we're doing right now through CIP and through our lawyer and through procurement is we're looking at opportunities to have deductive change orders to de-scope in areas of EQMR that we don't need. For instance, the design called for offices, called for central air conditioning system. And so looking at the A&E design for these projects, early on, knowing what the design called for, we just didn't want to come in and say, oh, that's someone else's work, let's scrap it. We wanted to go through this process for as far as we can, and if the money's there, we would agree to do it. And so because we don't need those additional offices, it will have to be de-scoped. What will also have to be de-scoped is the electrical system and all the bells and whistles that come with something like that. So our team is looking at ways of trying to bring that cost down by 1.4 million so we can stay within the budget. The water line project came in at 800,000, underfunded, but then the total budget for that project was the water line, and then there's another 2 million for EQMR, then there was another, I believe, 4 million for Warehouse One. But we proceeded with the water line project, because, you know, senators, that if there's no water in the yard, the Coast Guard shuts us down. And even though we've had several instances of a busted water line pipe and the lack of water into the terminal yard, we have a very good relationship with the Coast Guard, where they have not made a decision to shut the port down. Instead, they have asked us to do mitigation type efforts, like notify the PD Fire Station, like be on high alert, like the vessels come equipped with their own fire suppressant kind of systems, and so those provisions are made. And so in looking at this bill before us, we're respectfully asking for your support to remove the caps, and whatever flexibility we are given, it would be guided by the board, but more importantly, whatever we're pursuing will be approved by PUC, and it will be approved by the board, by PUC, and everything will be pursuant to procurement. We have a groundbreaking next week for Hotel WRF, and you're all invited. I'd really like to see former General Manager Brown attend the groundbreaking, because a lot of this work is a continuation of the work that she started while she was at the port, and is a past former General Manager, also Senator Torres. We'd like for you to be there, because you were also involved in these kinds of things. But this bill basically says, you know, continue, give us the ability to move forward, give us the, we don't, we're not even asking for resources, because we're not even asking for a general fund appropriation. We're just asking that you restructure this revenue bond statute so that we're not boxed in, because the last thing you want to do is try to put me in a box, because we'll find a way out, and thank God, we found a way out so far. But we're at this juncture that if you don't lift these caps, then I cannot, as General Manager, take the 8 million that could be for the annex and throw it into different areas, because when the governor pledged that 15 million for us, it was CIP shortfalls, it was go purchase a crane. And in regards to the crane, two years ago, we submitted a bid, a grant through MARAD with a robust application to waive the Buy American. They don't manufacture gantry cranes anywhere in the United States, so the irony is, we couldn't use MARAD money to buy a crane, then we couldn't buy a crane because of Buy American. So MARAD told us that the application looked really good, but it's just the Buy American requirement that didn't get us to even first base. And so fast forward two years later, when you had the bipartisan infrastructure law and about the $3 trillion that's available that we can compete for, so in response to MARAD telling us no, we submitted another grant, and this, instead of asking for two cranes, we're asking for three cranes, because of more monies available, because of the Endo-Pacific strategy, the Pacific deterrence, because of what's happening in China and in Russia, Ukraine. The Port Authority of Guam is now really in a position where DoD should look to the port, and we've been having very successful meetings locally with Joint Region Marianas out in DC through the help of former Congresswoman Allan Braddalio, Governor Leon Guerrero, Lieutenant Governor Josh Tenorio facilitated a meeting that we had with Chairman Garmendy, who's on the House Services Readiness Subcommittee. And you see our newsletters, you see how public and open we have been in this effort to just try to chase any opportunity. We're on the verge of getting another grant from Oil DCC, which is Office of Economic Adjustment, and we got a 1.6 million dollar grant to update our master plan. And in our master plan effort, which we would be coming to you for approval, we're repositioning the port so that the Department of Defense is going to be our main customer, so our revenue will not be relied solely on throughput, cargo throughput, for the community and for the military. And so in that respect, the DoD understands, and through the study we're going to do, we're looking at all of our facility structure, we're looking at the structure of our WARFs, but we asked Gary Corbar to fund a third component of that, and that's port readiness. So in relation to the military readiness, how is the port, is the port ready enough to support the military? military readiness? Not the military buildup only, but just the military readiness in the Pacific. And so those are the kind of things that we're pushing out there. There's been conversations that, given the incident in Red Hill and that environmental disaster, there's been major discussions that the Port Authority could be used as an alternate fuel storage for DOD. We have Area A, and you recall when we came in, we asked MOBO to sever the Area A, those unused tank farms, so that we could try to market some kind of opportunity there. So we come to you with solutions, and we come to you asking support to continue these opportunities. And you've heard Ms. Mendiola say that everything is bond compliant. There's an email where he said he... Bond Council raises no issues or objections to this bill. We went to San Francisco early on on the first revenue bond reset, only to hear from them that everything is above board and only to hear from them that this bill is certainly in line with all the bond covenants. And so any questions, concerns that have been raised over the years, I believe we've been able to address it. Any questions, concerns you have today, I stand ready to address it, and my team is here with me as well. So thank you for the opportunity, and we submit this for the record in our response to this bill. Thank you, senators.
Thank you, Mr. Raspichio. You certainly outlined a lot of the challenges that the port is facing, but mostly the opportunities that you have. And I'm pleased that the WARP is your priority right now from F1 to F6 because that has been at least a decades-long discussion with regard to the deterioration of the WARP and any compromise that occurs whenever there's a slight earthquake or inclement weather. But I wanted to go back to and ask this of you, Mel, as the administrator of GITA. There was part of... The main focus of this bill is to address the barriers that it creates with regard to financing or seeking additional bonds or being compliant with the bonds. Mr. Raspichio talked a little bit, and he used the word "being boxed in." Can you just elaborate a little bit on the necessity for this bill and how it brings us closer in line with being compliant with bond covenants and also gives more latitude for financing generally for these projects at the port?
Certainly, thank you. With regard to the revenue bond, the focus of any revenue bond is that the pledged revenue sources are maintained and enhancing these revenue sources is a good thing. There are the projects that were articulated in the bond, the H-WARP renovation, Gulf Pier project, new administrative building, et cetera. Those projects are there. However, to the detail that the funding level needs to be dictated, the opinion of Bond Council was that that would not have a material effect for investors, but the flexibility of paying for these projects, you would need to receive the approval of the legislature. And so what the legislature would be doing is allowing for the Port Authority to exercise more flexibility in accomplishing these projects. I think one thing that I can observe as a colleague of General Manager Raspichio's is that with the bipartisan infrastructure bill, with ARP that came down before it, with the CARES Act that came down before that, the federal funding situation is a fluid type of situation. There's money, there's opportunities, and it would be wonderful for the port to... The port is a very capable team to go after these... To go after federal funding to help to alleviate some of the pressure of increasing construction costs, which I think is something that's universally accepted island-wide, not only within the framework of the port, but also the construction industry at large. I think we can all agree that the prices have gone up. So in conjunction with the prices of construction, the prices of construction, the opportunities that have presented themselves over the last several years and rebuilding post-pandemic economy, this amendment allows for additional flexibility wherein the projects remain the same. However, the funding levels are not boxed in, the funding levels are not capped where they originally were, which were very good. I believe these were very sound estimates at the time because we had to make these estimates based on plans, strategy, and so on and so forth. But of course, there have been a number of factors that have changed, and I think the legislature should look to being... Adapting with the times and with economic conditions, the prevailing economic conditions of the world around us.
And what is that timeline? You mentioned the time that... Was it 2014 prices? What was the time that these estimates were made? The timeline for the cost, was it based on 2014, 2018? Do you recall?
It was, Madam Chair, was 2014.
So that's a good lapse of time that has occurred.
Which the funding wasn't available till 2018.
And I wanted to ask you, Rory, with regard to... You mentioned that you have... You described in so many words the efforts, the fluidity, and how you respond to certain things. You chased down opportunities for reduced costs, like a waiver of the Buy American Act. And what I want to ask you is, and you and Mel may be a discussion, the approach to taking advantage of opportunities as they present themselves, that is an effort that you have with GITA, correct, in terms of maximizing and locking in certain projects, certain funding sources at any one given time over another? Because one of the concerns that may be presented is the plan of action and the fluidity of the plan of action. But is it safe to say that that is a necessary and ordinary course at this point as you're looking to take advantage of cost savings in one breath, but also taking advantage of locking into a project that may not be available in a couple of years? How do you justify the need to be fluid and to more or less prioritize one over another based on the market situation?
Well, I'll tell you, if the legislature does nothing today, we will still build Hotel WARP, to be clear. But if the legislature does nothing today, you're going to have about $10.5 million that's going to be stuck in the administration building and the annex building. So if the legislature does something today and passes this bill, we can take that... We can forego building an annex and putting it into other priority areas. We're just using ARP money, for example, to front, to continue the Hotel WARP project, but we'd like for some of these other projects, like if the annex building is not going to be done, we'd like for that 8 million to go back into our unrestricted funds or use that for other CIP projects, which we will. In adding everything up, senators, we're like $30 million in the red. So even with this revenue bond reset, it doesn't mean we're going to have all the money that we need to do everything in the revenue bond funded list. It just means that, like you've mentioned, give us the priority. We are chasing a waiver of the Buy American, but in one of my discussions with MARAD, we were very clear. If there's a $6 to $8 million savings for not complying with Buy American, and you know that, and we're going to save 12 months versus 18 months if we don't have Buy American, we can get the steel here in six months. Also with the irony that a couple of months ago, if you go to the port, you're going to see... You would have seen steel beams that the DOD is bringing in for their Navy Pier. They're not subject to Buy American. And when we met with Admiral Korca in NAFAC Headquarters, I said, well, Admiral, you get to say what the Port Authority or even the governor can never get to say. You can say that in the interest of national security, then all those things get rolled out for them. But in our case, they don't. So if we're chasing more saving opportunities, but if we don't get Buy American, it doesn't mean that this project's going to be a halt.
Thank you. And I appreciate that we are also in a situation where we have the military buildup. We know that that is occurring. There's a lot of movement with Camp Loz. There's a lot of need to shore up the infrastructure in Guam to accommodate not only organic growth, but also this foreseen growth, plus the recovery of tourism, plus a cruise line industry that is also being looked at. There's a lot of economic opportunities that were there, and we all appreciate that. The Port Authority is a critical... It's the critical infrastructure and really the lifeline to all business activity on Guam. And with that, I concur and I applaud you for your vision with your team in determining what is important with regard to that critical infrastructure that is going to lead into the economic rebound and also the economic growth of Guam going forward. And I also just want to thank you too for the briefing that you gave us on some of your challenges. I know that we have recognized for the past 15 years the importance of building up the Port Authority of Guam, and I think that your team has not only demonstrated a good working environment with you, but they've also, I think, done a good job of demonstrating why we have to start addressing those areas that have been compromised, the conditions of the WARP, the need to change out the cranes because their life expectancy is coming very close to the end. And I just want to acknowledge the work that all of you have done. I think that there has been a great deal of movement at the port, and more than anything, through this climate, your productivity just shows that your team has taken on the responsibility of ensuring that the delivery of goods and services to Guam has not been compromised, notwithstanding this pandemic or any other supply chain challenges that we've had on Guam and nationally. So with that, I'd like to open up the questioning, if there are any members of the paddle that would like... Of the senators here that would like to ask any questions of either Ms. Mendiola or... Yes, I will. I will. Senator Moynihan, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the Director of the Port Authority and GITA for your excellent explanations. I'm most interested in what you had to say regarding the Indo-Pacific threat. We had this opportunity where the federal government, the Department of Defense, is really supporting the efforts of the Port Authority to upgrade our facility. They have a lot of interest here in Guam and see the need to support you. Obviously, GITA and yourself and your team have influenced them enough to show that we have the capabilities of doing things right to meet their expectations. What you're really telling me is that we had this great opportunity with the federal government here behind us to support. You just need to get out of the box of what you're limited in. You're asking us to kind of give us the leeway based on the plans that you presented to us, which I feel very comfortable with moving forward on. I just wanted to say, unless something comes up, I'd like to see this bill move forward from what your explanations have been provided to us and the work your team has done. So I thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. Senator Brown, do you have any questions or comments? So you're deferring? Senator Tiede agree?
Thank you, Senator Brown. I know we try to... Whoever comes first into the hearing usually is chosen because they take the time to be here on time to make sure that we have an opportunity to ask some questions. And I appreciate the port being here as well as Mel coming here as well and talking about the bond, because that's one of my biggest concerns. You know, I don't want to jeopardize any bond covenants at all with regards to this. And I do know that, doing some research regarding this, is my concern that I brought to your attention is on the bond covenant itself, the guidelines for it, which is on page 6, D13. I asked if you had an opportunity to review that, Mel. Unfortunately, you didn't have it with you today, the bond covenant, I guess the Bible of the bond covenant for these funds. Were you able to get that section that I talked about, Mel?
I've asked Senator that it be emailed, and so I'm looking at a copy of the bond indenture.
Yeah, that page I talked to you about, page 6, D13. Are you familiar with that section of the bond covenant? I know that Tina was very instrumental on, when it came to the funding, and was part of the team that worked on obtaining these bonds. She's not here today.
I'm looking at page 6, but I'm not seeing a section D13.
Okay, well, then, let me read it for you. Establishment and application of construction accounts. Modification of projects. With respect to each project or series as determined by the authority and for the construction account for such projects or series shall establish within the construction fund and maintain hold interest under the indenture, a separate account designed as the construction account. Amounts in each construction account shall be used and withdrawn as provided in the indenture solely for the payment of project costs for each project. And then it says, including direct payment, payment of debt obligations issued as authority. Let me get down to the right... The part that says that any modification... Authority may modify the specific or descriptions of any project or projects by filing with the trustees. And each depository for each construction account for each project or projects, a certified certificate of authority describing such modifications. Basically, it goes on to say that any time there's any change or consideration, that the bondholders have to be the one to approve of it. Not necessarily PUC, as mentioned in certain areas, they review the projects, but they don't approve it. But bondholders have to provide some intake or approval of any changes that are made. That's what I'm reading here. And you're saying that you spoke to Bond Council, and according to you, you said that
The removal of individual project amounts will not impact existing bond covenants.
But did they mention anything about the bondholders being notified and approving of any changes?
Bondholders, first, there have not been any changes made, Senator, because the legislature has to first allow for the change. Next, with regard to the bond covenants, from everything that you read before, I am not a lawyer, I will, you know, I'll disclose that. I'm not a lawyer and I don't work for OREC, who's the Bond Council. But what I read is if there are material changes to the project, to the completion of the project, that that must be disclosed. It says, separate construction accounts must be created. It doesn't say what level the separate construction accounts must be funded. And it does, I believe, some of... That was the language that I read. From what you read, I thank you for your question. I think that's a good question, and if you'd like us to seek clarification from Bond Council on that specific question, at what point in time our bondholders need to be alerted? That does come up every so often. With regard to our bonds, they'll say, this was in the news, does this need to be disclosed? This was in the... Does this need to be disclosed? This went to the legislature, does this need to be disclosed? And normally what we do is we seek Bond Council's advice as to what constitutes disclosure and non-material disclosure. So certainly a clarification I can make with Bond Council, if that's what you would like.
I appreciate... Oh, well, absolutely. I think it's your responsibility, you know, as GITA, that, you know, we rely on you to protect this government, you know, to ensure that we're not breaking any laws or we're not rejected from anything or having to pay anything back. I think it is. I think it is a responsibility of GITA to provide a full disclosure and to look deeply into ensuring that whatever bonds, that we are not jeopardizing any bonds or that it's not going to, you know, kick us in the behind later on. So I appreciate, yeah, for GITA doing their job.
Well, if your perception is that the bond counsel's not looking deeply enough, then we're happy to continue to get them to do more.
And that specific, yeah, and that specific question. And like I said, it's on page 6, D13. I appreciate if you can ask them to give you their interpretation of that to ensure that we're not jeopardizing anything in that perspective. I mean, already the board is dealing with the rejection from FEMA of $9.9 million that they, you know, they went after and was rejected there. We don't want to see this happen again to one of our agencies as well. So it's just crossing our Ts and dotting our Is that's important here, and I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, can I add some clarification?
I didn't ask you a question.
I'm going to add some clarification if the chair will allow me.
I will allow you, Mr. Raspicio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, we did have...
I'm the one that's doing these questions. You can answer when I'm done.
Excuse me, Senator Tello, I would really like to have proper decorum here.
Right, right.
And it is not unusual for a clarification to be posed. So I will allow Mr. Raspicio to provide clarification.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm just saying that I have a line of questioning that I'd like to continue it because it's breaking me off.
Thank you.
So I have no problem, Mr. Raspicio, answering or clarifying at the end of my questioning. So I have no problem with that. He can respond, but I just want to continue on with my questioning because it's leading to something right now and it's breaking what I'm asking.
On the point of clarification, and then you may proceed. Mr. Raspicio, go ahead.
Yeah, before we go to the next thought, which Senator Tello, we're very happy to dissect every concern that you have. When we were going through the first revenue bond reset in public law 34-70, we did have conversations with the bond counsel and GITA representatives. They did provide a very lengthy opinion, and it said that we do not, they did not inform us that the mechanism to reprogram bond proceeds is through the official statement. They said we have to seek a legislative amendment to the public law if we're going to move monies around. But the only catch was that we cannot move monies around to create new revenue stream that would be 30% or more, otherwise it would be a taxable occurrence. So there was a thorough analysis in this revenue bond restructuring. In fact, former Deputy General Manager Alfred Duñez wrote a letter to PUC, and I responded to Mr. Duñez's letter. I gave copies of the PUC because this is the very thing that he brought up before the PUC.
Thank you. So during the, you know, going after the bond for these projects, and it was discussed about in the last legislature, the 35th, how we changed it, but we didn't change the caps. The caps maintained the same. So what's the difference other than of course prices going up? I understand that. But what would that do with regards to the bond covenants when in the 20, I think it was, which bill was it? Senator Frank Ugin that first introduced the bill? What changes to the bond covenants would, you know, affected if there were caps made on certain projects?
Senator, may I ask for clarification? Effect whom? The port or?
Well, the bond itself because the bill that was created, okay, and it was public law 30, no, that was 3544.
Or 34-70?
3544. The original bill. Section 4. So the original bill, authorizing the Port Authority for the issuance of bond and other debtness for the purpose of financing and refinancing, correct? It also gave the ability to pay for prior loans that were out too, if I'm not mistaken as well, which I will ask what's the status on those prior loans that was given the authority. So here in this particular bill, the original bill, there were caps put on that, on these projects. So what does that change for the bond when you went out for the bond, knowing that these individuals who purchased these bonds knew that there were caps and now there are no caps? Wouldn't they have to be informed, the bondholders be informed of this?
The amounts that were put in place upon legislation was, I was not here at the time of bill, I was not at GITA at the time of the sponsoring of the original legislation. But for all of our capital projects, the amounts are put in place because you must put in a, you must estimate how much you believe a project to cost. And then when you go out to the bondholders to sell the bond, you also must estimate. It is of the, it is reasonable to, it is reasonable to understand that project costs change, but so long as the projects that are being funded remain present and their status can be reported on as General Manager Raspicio has reported on them, then the dollars and cents that I think General Manager Raspicio also articulated on just a few moments ago can have some flexibility because of the changes of the cost of materials, the cost of labor, the availability of both, and other factors that affect the cost of construction. So back to your original question, which was to what detail we need to drill down to bondholders and our investors to tell them when we're shifting around amounts, the opinion of legal counsel was that the amounts, as long as there's legislative approval, we should be, that we're within the terms of the bond indenture. So when the legislation is, we could certainly ask bond counsel if this were to happen like this, if this, if, right now, we've asked bond counsel as presented, does this bill have any, do we have anything to, is there any material effect on the bonds, including, you know, having to make any disclosures and so on and so forth? The feedback of bond counsel was that this bill was fine and that it would sit here with the legislature to determine what the caps would be or wouldn't be. If there was a material change to, via amendment or something along those lines in the process of this bill, we would go back to the bond counsel and ask them to opine again.
Can you explain the 40% that they were talking about, like the taxable certification? And it doesn't jeopardize the 40%?
30%.
30%.
Well, it says, it says here, please, if you can explain the requirement for maintaining the 40% taxable income ratio when reprogramming the project funded by the port bond tax certificate?
Certainly. There's something, Senator, called alternative minimum tax. To go back to taxation, alternative minimum tax was created as an alternative minimum tax for those in a very high tax bracket. Certain types of projects are subject to the alternative minimum tax and certain projects are not, non-AMT versus AMT. And so what that description was referencing was the shift of an AMT project to a non-AMT
It's a shift? That's what you're saying? That's what the 40% means, that, you know, as long as we're not jeopardizing the 40% taxable?
If you have $100 million, 30% is AMT and 70% is non-AMT, and you shift around projects within that $100 million, at the end of the day, it needs to be made up of 30% AMT and 70% non-AMT. That's what the 30% references.
But I'm talking about the 40%? The 40% that was mentioned in here?
Right, the proportion of the projects, I guess, in my example to you, the proportion of projects that are subject to AMT versus not subject to AMT.
Okay, well, I don't see that in here. The 40%, yeah, it doesn't make any sense. You know what? I'll come back to it. It'll come up, yeah. Okay. You want to say something now, right? With regards to trying to explain the 40%? Because it's also in your resolution from the board, talks about the 40%.
There are certain...
If Mel can't answer it, you want to answer this one?
There are certain types of projects, and so when you're going after a construction, when you're going after a bond for construction, its ability to be triple tax exempt, its tax exemption status is largely dependent on the type of project you have. So for example, a project like H, a project like, let me see here. A waterline replacement versus a project like an administrative building where it has a commercial purpose, you can rent out spaces. One has a commercial purpose versus one has a, one can argue a strictly public interest, more of a lifeline type of focus versus a mixed use of lifeline and commercial interest. So what, so with regard to tax status, so they're called, some projects are subject to what's called alternative minimum tax, which I explained earlier was, is a tax assessed to the very rich versus non-AMT. And so the proportion, the project mix, your total bond can be made up of AMT and non-AMT projects. It could be a mixed bag of both. You do always have to make sure that the non-AMT and AMT are maintained such that the taxability of the bond or the tax benefit that the bondholder receives is the same, it's uniform. If you change that up, that produces taxable, that has the potential to produce taxable events for investors, and that is why they need to be disclosed if and when there is a shift to that, AMT versus non-AMT. But this bill does not propose a shift from AMT to non-AMT. The projects are maintained. It is merely the caps associated with them that are being removed.
Mr. Raspicio or Director Raspicio, in your testimony, which by the way, we only had one page of it, and it wasn't until the very end that they finally gave us your full testimony. No, it was a mistake of the printer. So they were, so we were trying to catch up with what you were talking about earlier. But on your testimony here in your bullet, I guess it would be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Second page on us, it would be on page 2 at the bottom, where it talks about, under the tax certificate of the authority, section 1.5c, purposes of financing 40% of the 17.5 can be reprogrammed without triggering the 40% taxable income ratio. So can you kind of explain in your words what this means?
Yeah, what that means is, for example, if we were going to take this revenue bond money and build commercial space and rent, like offices and rent it out and create new revenue that exceeds 40% of the current revenue stream, then that would be a taxable occurrence. So when we were going to bond counsel to ask if they agreed with this revenue bond reset, they said as long as it does not trigger a 40% taxable occurrence, and that's what that means.
So it's basically the buildings that you're building down at the port or the, not renovations, but these projects that are going to be built, generate revenue, correct? They will generate some revenue?
Or protect existing revenue. And that's what, and that's the message to the bondholders, and that's what they're most concerned with.
Right.
Because they've invested 70 million and 30 million of which went to pay off those loans immediately because that was part of the bond requirement. They're investing these monies to make sure that the port continues to be operational and their investment is sound. And that's what that is. And in our discussions with GITA and with bond counsel, that's what the bondholders are concerned about. You move monies around, move monies around, but in the end, what have you done to protect their investment? And this is what we're doing to protect their investment.
In order to pay, to pay them back?
Correct.
Okay. So with regard to that, the changes that are made, what is the amount? Because in the original bill, it gave, you know, an amount for each project. So has the port come up with each additional amount for the, or a new cost for each of these projects?
We have. We even have an estimated amount, but in the interest of procurement, we should never disclose what those amounts are. And when we were going for the first revenue bond reset, the Chief Procurement Officer, Mr. Faji, was saying that we should not be putting in legislation how much money is earmarked for these particular projects. It's different when you get a...
But we did that for the first one.
And that was the problem. That was the problem, Senator, because we not only showed the potential bidders what the amount was in statute, we also showed them that it was severely underfunded, so they didn't want to waste their time submitting a bid. And so I could tell you that without, for Hotel Wharf, for example, 59 million with a $24 million budget. The waterline replacement, there was a $6 million cap by statute. It came in at 5.6 million. EQMR Building, I said it was 1.4 million over what the statute provided, but we're using other funding sources to cover over that shortfall, which we're going to try to make up through deductive change orders. And Warehouse 1, the bond allocation was 2 million. We had a bid come in at a little over 4 million, and the second lowest bidder came in at 6 million. So you potentially can see what those amounts are. Gulf Pier, we budgeted, by statute, 2 million. There has been no taker so far for Gulf Pier because of, they recognize the cost for that is much more than what the statute allows. And then 10.5 million for the Annex Building and also the Administration Building. So if you add all these things up, even without bookmarking the estimates for Gulf Pier and for Warehouse 1, we're $30 million overall shortfall.
And when was, what would the $15 million from the art funding do?
So when we got the allocation from the governor, from American Rescue Plan, it was apply this to your shortfalls in your CIP or use it to purchase a crane or help purchase the crane. Use it for anything that will keep the port solvent, and in exchange, don't raise the tariffs for two fiscal years. And so because this money was readily available, the team negotiated the 59 million down to 46 million, and they broke it up in two phases. So phase one that we're committed to right now is 38 million. 38 million, then you apply the Tiger Grant money, you apply the revenue bond money, you apply the $15 million ARP funds. That's where the ARP is going to right now, 100% of it. But if we get this revenue bond reset and the caps are removed and through the Board's authority, determine what the priorities are based on the amount of money we have, based on the needs that we have, and based on the additional funding sources we have. So everything is fluid. We may get approved the $48 million grant for our three gantry cranes, so we don't have to worry about this $15 million being applied for the crane. Or what's also in the pipeline is the matching grants that are required to get these funds. $18 million grant for F1 to F6 is an 80-20 share. That's a $5 million cost to the port. Maybe that's funded, you know, through unrestricted funds if they're still there, and it could be funded through the ARP money. If this passes and we shift monies to Hotel Wharf, those monies that we pledged for Hotel Wharf will become available to be used as matching grants for other grants that we're chasing.
What is the status of the Tiger Grant? I mean, when did you first receive this and what is the deadline?
Senator Tiede-Green, I'm going to ask, is this be your last question, please? Because we have other senators that need to ask questions, and in the interest of time, I'd like to afford them the opportunity also. So let this, please wrap up your line of questioning.
So let this, please wrap up your line of questioning.
The, the Tiger Grant question-
Well, then let me, well, you can answer that, I have one more question, so go ahead. Go ahead, ask the Tiger Grant. If I known this was another, another last question, that I would have pulled another question out, but since we're in the midst of asking him a question on the Tiger Grant, so if you can tell me when that expires-
The Tiger Grant was awarded to the port in 2016 with a three-year period of performance. We came in 2019, and from 2016 to 2019, uh, there was no submission to, uh, MARAD for the economic assessment. So we were visited by MARAD, uh, I want to say, March, no, February, they came to Guam to tell us that if we don't submit the documents that are required to allow us to, um, proceed with the 10 million and apply this for this project, that if we don't submit anything by, um, summertime, uh, if, if we were going to go on the existing timelines and submit everything, for example, in August, think they're going to review it in September, then October gets awarded, because the last month for that award was October of 2019. So they told us that if you don't, uh, submit any, everything by, uh, May, or maybe hopefully by April, then you're going to lose this funding, uh, come summertime, and there's been no, uh, progress. So a month later, uh, the chairman and I and, um, Mr. Valana, we were in DC for, um, American Association of Ports, and we also paid a visit to MARAD to update them. And when we updated them, in a month's time, we went from many areas of 50% to like 90%, 95% complete. We spent a whole month bringing in all the different agencies, the local, federal agencies, to, like agriculture, they need to, uh, sign off on, on the coral relocation. Part of that project required 800 species of coral be relocated to Dog Lake, uh, in order, in order for, for, for everything to be compliant. So we submitted everything around, um, uh, May's timeline, uh, then we got the award, the notice to proceed in the last month of the last year of this grant, because they had to, they had to do all their reviews, and also during- And you can, you, you can verify everything I'm saying, and, and so MARAD also took us from a, uh, the level of the environmental assessment that was required was an EA, which was a lot more stringent than what we were earlier told in, in the prior year. And so because MARAD communicated with us early on, uh, told us what our, our issues are, what the consequence will be, we doubled down, and we got that thing in on time, and we got the, the notice on the last month of the last year that this. So none of these projects were shovel-ready, uh, I have to add. And I even told MARAD that, uh, I, I understand, my thinking is that the, the, the delay really could be caused from the, the, the ability to, for the port, uh, to get the 2018 revenue bond. So that's how I told them, that's probably how I could justify the two-year lapse in doing anything for the Tiger Grant, because we didn't get the revenue bond till 2018. You know, and then, so they said, whatever your challenges were to this day, this is what you need to do, and, and we did it.
Thank you, Rory.
So, um, the last question I have, I'm giving you is regarding the other loans, uh, based on the, the bond that, uh, allowed you to pay off other loans? What is the status on those other-
They've been paid off immediately.
They were paid off immediately?
Absolutely. You get a $70 million revenue bond, and they're, you're told 30 million of which has to go to pay down these other loans.
To pay off the prior, okay, other loans, okay, that's, I wanted to hear the status on those. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I just want a quick clarification, because this has come up in previous hearings here, this 9.9 million that FEMA disallowed, we, we never expected a reimbursement. This was what we were told to submit for all the, for all the overtime, for all the employee salaries, uh, during the pandemic. The Port Authority never got double pay, we never got time and a half, but FEMA encouraged us, just submit the application and see what they'll say. So we submitted it. What we're hearing is that the port lost out on a 9.9 million, and we have to pay it back. So that, that's not a ding on us. We knew exactly what we were doing when we asked FEMA at their, uh, request to submit, and it was denied, but that, that's it. That's all I want to say with the 9.9. So we're not $9.9 million in the hole because we have to pay it back. I hope that clarifies your concerns, Senator Tied agree.
Okay, all right, uh, thank you very much. I'm going to now ask Senator Duñez if he has any comments or questions.
Jesus, Madam Chair, and certainly want to, uh, welcome Senator Ruspicio and, uh, Director Mendiola and the team from the port here today, thank you for being here. I really only have two questions, um, maybe they're kind of observations and maybe a clarification. So it looks consistent with the 2019-03 resolution, the, uh, 2021-07, as well as now the 2022-10, in terms of the modifications consistently being requested under Bill Public Law 3544. So, I think some of the concerns that are questions that have been asked, so I guess for me and my clarification is that you're using the term caps and projects, but then in your testimony, you've discussed basically, uh, shifting priorities. Is, is, is this one and the same, and is the bond request at the same amount but to reconfigure the projects?
Yeah, you're absolutely correct.
Okay, because that, that's where I think they're, 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 you know, uh, and, and Mel, I think it's, it's only reasonable, right? I, I think bond council, that's what they would continuously look at. I'm sure they'll be looking at the final product of the bill, uh, for them to comment, because that, that would also affect in terms of its viability, right? I mean, of course, as we all know, bills have a life of their own until finally being voted on.
That is correct.
So bond council then, in that event, would end up making sure that bondholders and the financing would understand what the terms and what any changes may have transpired through legislation.
The bond council's concern is to protect, um, the, um, protect the port from being called upon, um, in the event of, uh, potential violation of bond covenant. And so, um, if, uh, bond council will look at the bill, looked at the bill in its current form, will look at the bill as well in its final form to ensure that there are no, um, potential conflicts with the, um, um, the covenants of the bond.
You know, certainly I can understand, like I said, due to the consistency, you can see that there's been, um, you know, uh, a constant request through board action to, um, be able to address priorities. So I'm just going to watch as it goes through the process. I, I, if, if the amounts, and if the amount overall hasn't changed, and you're using different pots of revenue to address the projects, then we just, I continue. That, that was, that would have probably been my major concern is it, the solvency of the amount and, and the ability to, to service that, because that, I mean, that's probably our biggest, uh, concern here operationally. I mean, it's your board and you, right? And so, but, so I'll continue to watch as it goes through the process. I think this has been very educational, and, and certainly the bill, uh, you know, is, is correct to move through this process, and we'll watch the committee work and the markup, and I'll continue to listen to other questions. Thank you once again, Senator, and thank you, Mel. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, certainly good morning to the Port Authority. With regards to this issue, and certainly I have intimate information, having been the general manager at the time this bond was executed, the first bond, the Port Authority of Guam and its 40, getting closer to 50-year history, uh, was executed. Uh, one of the highest-rated bonds, and certainly Mrs. Mendiola, you can let me know if that has changed in the last few years, but at the time we executed this bond, Port Authority received the highest rating of any bond in the history of the government of Guam on its first time out. So we're very proud of the accomplishment of receiving this 71.4 million dollar bond. And of course, at the time, in all fairness to you as well, you were a board member at the time that this particular bond, uh, was pursued. I do want to ask since the time, because actually this particular week, interesting that the hearing is happening during this week, but this week, four years ago, we actually closed on this bond in New York, and we were very successful in acquiring this bond. Much to our surprise, we had more interested buyers than we had, uh, funds available to acquire from them, which, uh, was pretty good for our first time out. But since that time, it's been four years, and you mentioned that bidders don't want to bid, or bidders are not bidding, or bidders were not bidding, uh, because the amounts of these caps were not enough. I didn't know that you would engage in such discussion with bidders. Normally, the project is put out, you go through the process, and then the bidders put their amounts, and that's the level of engagement. I don't generally engage with contractors, I don't-
And neither have I.
I just want to, no, but I want to clarify, because your statements were made that they didn't want to bid because these amounts had caps. Is that, I'm sorry, we can replay the video to verify that.
You don't need to replay anything, Senator, if you're listening. I said after we had 22 submissions of potential bidders, zero submission. We went back and we surveyed each of them through the procurement process. We asked, why didn't you submit a bid? You came to the pre-bid conference, you showed your interest. What are some of the issues that prevented you from bidding? I don't appreciate the, 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 the suggestion that we engaged with conversations with bidders outside the procurement-
You didn't outline that on your previous response to, to-
I did.
I, I'm here listening, that's fine, we can have a difference of opinion.
So it was done, Madam Chair, it was done in the context of the procurement process where we went back and-
How many bids did you execute, and did you do one for each project?
We didn't have the problems we have with these, uh, with the other projects.
How many bids did you execute and for which projects?
I tell you, in the last year, we did more work in five-
How many bids did you execute and for which projects?
We did many projects that we executed, this is the-
Specifically with regards to bond funding?
Oh, bond funding? We did the waterline project, we didn't have to go back and survey the bidders because we got a response. We, we tried, we executed the Warehouse, uh, Warehouse One project. We, we had, uh, bidders that responded to that, so we didn't have to go back and ask the others who didn't bid, why they didn't bid. The only reason why we did this for Hotel Worf, Senator, is because we had no bidders. So we wanted to know, why didn't you submit a bid? 22 companies, including reputable companies on Guam, came to the pre-bid conference, which I don't go to the pre-bid conference, I'm not, uh, privy to who these people are, to who they're bidding. So I said, there must be something in the procurement process that we can engage with the potential bidders, so only, only the 22 potential bidders got to answer a survey. We didn't go out and ask beyond who expressed an interest.
Did you do all 22 for all the projects that were listed individually or collectively?
Why would we do that when there weren't 22 who submitted for the other projects?
Were they collecting, were they collecting bids for all five projects or individual projects? Or were the projects collectively put together?
No, they were individual projects, Senator, they were bid out-
Okay, and so the 22 bidded on all individual projects or one particular project?
Just for Hotel Worf.
Just for Hotel Worf.
Correct. So when, so when you have 22 people telling you, hey, I want to come to your party, and then you have your party and no one shows up, you might want to go ask your friends, hey, why didn't you come to my party?
With regards to 2019, your first year before the, the COVID occurred, uh, in early part of 2020, what bids were issued for any of these projects?
Zero.
Or even design of the projects?
Well, there were some A&E designs that were in play, uh, I believe Gulf Pier A&E, uh, Warehouse One A&E, EQMR A&E, Waterline A&E. We, we issued several A&Es for these revenue bond-funded projects in 2019 to get the A&E going. And NC Macario was awarded, uh, the bid, uh, for, for most of those. But in the, in, in the case of going from the A&E to the actual bid, I explained that, uh, when we bid out the Warehouse One project, for example, we had to cancel Warehouse One project because the first bid, lowest bid came in about 4 million, and the second bid came in about 6 million. Uh, there were some issues in the design of Warehouse One that we're always concerned with. So in the end, we canceled that project completely because we didn't have the 2 million dollars.
What year was that bid, uh, put in place? For the warehouse?
I believe it was just, uh, early part of this year or later part of last year.
So almost three years later?
None of these projects were shovel-ready, none of these projects, and, and the problems we had in procurement-
Well, I would, I would disagree.
Well, I would-
Hotel, Hotel Worf pretty much had to be shovel-ready-
It's not.
To even, to even have participated in the Tiger Grant.
How could it have been when you never submitted the work that was required to get the-
I'm not going to debate with you, Senator Ruspicio, if we did, we'd be here all day, I'm simply-
And I have the time.
Senator Ruspicio, I've got all the time as well, but that's not the purpose of this forum. I get to question you with regards to these issues related to this legislation. But it is three years later. I do want to ask Mrs. Mendiola with regards to the bondholders, because it's, it's kind of unusual that, you know, three or four years later, of course, we can argue the pandemic put a little hiccup in the process, or whatever the case may be, uh, but projects, for example, like H-Worf, were authorized and designated also by DOD to be determined to be critical projects. Probably one of the key reasons it was funded is one of the six projects nationwide by MARAD for the Tiger Grant, uh, and was given that protection with regards to construction. So any contractor who is working on that project certainly, uh, could prioritize bringing in workers to, to actually do the construction of H-Worf. Um, so with regards to that particular project, um, where are we with that? I mean, with regards to, to the funding?
Um, I'm, I'm sorry, Senator, uh, with where we are with regards to the funding-
Well, with regards to these projects in terms of, I mean, here we are four years later, four years later, and not a single project, at least unless you can clarify and tell me where and how, has actually, has any of these bond projects been started? Have they begun anywhere? Is there any shovel to the ground for any single one of them?
What, uh, normally happens with the bonds is that there is, um, there's, uh, annual meetings with the ratings agencies. In addition, there's meetings, um, you can have meetings with investors to update them on the projects. Um, and so, uh, the public finance team, as well as the port team, have, um, have, have been in compliance with those meetings, as well as the disclosures associated with those meetings. Um, and, uh, so the feedback thus far, um, has been kind of, I mean, there's, there's, there's an overall, of course, the, 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 the face-to-face meetings, uh, declined, um, during the pandemic, understandably. Having said that, there has not been a lot, um, from my observation, um, with, and, and the public finance team's observation, there's not been, uh, much with regard to investor, um, concern, uh, with regard to this progress of the projects, which leads us to believe that, uh, things are performing, um, adequately.
Have they given you any feedback? I mean, we don't want to borrow money and have it sitting there for four, five, six, seven years. I mean, that's not normally the, the course of events. Uh, has any money been paid in debt service on any of this money yet? Has anything been drawn down on it yet?
Uh, yes, I can, I can talk to you about debt service as well, I have brought, I brought that, um, brought that with me. Um, and so, uh, with regard to debt service, um, things are, basically, everything is in compliance. What the bondholders, for the most part, when a bondholder goes after a Guam bond, as you're well aware, the triple tax-exempt nature of the bond, um, is the, uh, the driver, um, among other things, the major driver of demand, and the performance of the issuing entity, um, the entity in here being the Port Authority, the soundness of the revenue is, uh, what, uh, drives their concern. And so, um, because this is a revenue bond, um, it's pledged on, um, it's pledged on the revenue of the, of the entity. So some of the things that, um, at the outset of the pandemic, the preservation of revenue, um, was of major concern. And I think that, yeah, you heard, uh, um, General Manager Ruspicio talk about that, and some of the federal funding that has helped, um, smooth the way and avoid, um, uh, tariff hikes and so on and so forth. Um, and so those are the things that tend to concern our bondholders, is the smooth, uh, the smoothness of the revenue stream, less than the project, um, progress, although the project progress is part of the annual update.
Has any funds been paid out towards, uh, towards the bond? I understand the projects have not begun, but I mean, you know, is it just sitting there and the bondholders are not receiving anything while their money is being held in abeyance? If so, what are those amounts?
I'm sorry, the font is very small, but the debt service for fiscal '22 is 5.7, 5.7 million.
So we paid out so far 5.7 million? Or the port has paid up-
Debt service, debt service, annual debt service, 5.7. Oh, so far, I can get you a cumulative number, if you just give me a moment.
Because we haven't used these funds, and I, you know, I'm curious what it's going to cost us if we haven't been using it and it's sitting there, because I doubt we're not paying anything. I don't think these investors are going to have their money sit with no expectation on an annual basis of revenue. Uh, with regards to modification, again, I, I just wanted to ask the general manager, I mean, you, and I, but I will ask GITA first, the modification, there are specific requirements in the bond covenant on the processes with regards to modification- are specific requirements in the bond covenant on the processes with regards to modifications to the projects listed. Have those formal requests been made? Because I do hear you say we conferred with Bond Council and Bond Council has concurred, but has, have the, has a formal process been put in place with regards to these changes? Because some of the projects listed here were never included in the original bond. F1 was not included. Our presentation to the bondholders was that that amount would be paid out of revenue to address. We were all aware of the repairs that needed to be done to F1, as you also and the board were aware. And also with regards to the connection of the fuel line between, between F1 and Gulf Pier, was never a project included for bond funding, and yet this has been added on. Did the Bond Councils formally process that with the appropriate request and paperwork?
Yeah, yes, yes, Senator. The, again, the, the function of the project in as far as it contributes to whether or not there is an alternative, alternative minimum tax activation or not. So back to the, Senator Tella was talking about the 40% at what, you know, what proportion of projects have one function, what proportion of projects are, have some type of taxable implication versus a non-taxable implication. So these are the types of projects. Senator, I will go ahead and perhaps I can ask them to make a copy of the, of the debt service, the annual debt service since the issuance of the bond in 2019?
Yes, we would appreciate that for the committee, but certainly with regards to any modification for the projects identified. According to, to the agreement, it says the authority may modify the specifications or description of any project or projects by filing with the trustee and each depository for each construction account for which such projects or projects, a certificate of authority describing such modification, together with a written report of the port consultant, to the effect that such modification will have no material adverse effect on the authority's ability to comply with the rate covenant contained in the indenture and, and opinion of Bond Council, to the effect that such modification, the use of amounts in such construction accounts for such modified projects or projects will not adversely affect the inclusion, if any, of interests on any bonds from gross income for federal incomes tax purposes. It's probably the longest sentence I've ever read, but do you have all those formal documents with regards to the trustees on these modifications that are proposed, including the two that were never included in the original bond?
I was just asking, General Manager Rispisho, if those, any of the projects that are not on the original list have been, have been, have been, have gone through. Any project that has progressed, yes, of course, there would be disclosures made to bond, but a bond investor. But if it's subject, if it's currently kind of up for discussion here at the legislature, then it's not at that point yet.
So you have no documents to this effect on any proposed modifications of the projects? I understand the lifting of the caps, certainly because of cost increases, but I'm talking about the actual change of projects that have been, that have been proposed by the port.
Yeah, I can, I'll certainly put in a, a request for the correspondences over the last, in addition to our annual disclosures and, and things along those lines.
I think it would be helpful if we had that for reference because certainly we don't want to put ourselves in a position, especially on the first bond for the port, that we're not complying with bond covenants.
Did you have a point of information? I see you raising your hand, Mr. Rispisho.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. When we went for the first round, Bill 149, we provided to the legislature as part of that committee report, a letter from ORIC dated June 30, 2019. And I think this is where we need to focus to understand what we're dealing with. The Bond Council did address this issue, and I'll read it. As you are aware, "The bonds are not secured by any particular capital expenditure financed with proceeds of the bonds, but rather by, with certain exclusions, gross income, and other amounts received or receivable by the authority as revenues of any kind, port revenues from the ownership or operation of any part of the Jose de Leon Garro commercial port. Therefore, any modification of the expenditure list would only materially affect holders to the extent that such modification resulted in a material reduction of port revenues. Staff and administration of the authority have indicated that to us that the expenditure list modification proposed by 149-35 will likely have no impact on port revenues as the original capital expenditure being removed, namely, the new administration building, was not expected to generate any port revenues. Therefore, it should not be difficult to conclude that such amendments will not materially adverse effect to the interests of the current bond owners." That's what the Director of GITA has been saying. Council, Bond Council, saying that, that what we're doing here is fine. What we did in Bill 149 is fine, as long as it does not material affect, materially affect the port revenues.
I appreciate the, the feedback from Bond Council, but these are bond covenants that extend beyond the Bond Council. These are between the people of Guam and the bond investors, and they're specified with regards to the covenant agreements that were put in place. So I also want to add that to the record. What is your current staffing at the Port Authority of Guam, which was also something that was reviewed by the bond investors with regards to issuing us the bond? They also determined at the time that the port had excess capacity and staffing to accommodate the anticipated military growth and anticipated increase of cargo. So what is your current staffing?
Not true. The port never had the capacity to.
Mr. Rispisho, I'm asking a specific question. What is your, what is your current staffing pattern at the Port Authority?
We have about 404 employees. It's still not where we need to be, but that's where we're at.
You have 404 employees currently?
That's what I said.
I'd like to also request these positions. At the time the bond was executed, we had 356 employees, 121 in administration, 235 in the yard, with specific breakdowns to each division. So you now have 404.
Well, you also left the port with a net negative 104,000. We made seven and a half million the first year. I don't know where you're going with this line of questions. Don't interrupt.
Madam Chair, there's no need for that. I'm asking specific questions. Excuse me, um, may I please call order? I think, I think that, I think that this, this discussion is going beyond Bill 298 and, no, Senator Brown, please be quiet.
I'm sure you're going to slant the presentation, but these are specific questions to the bond indenture
I understand, Senator Brown, but I'm going to insist that we have decorum and respect for the chairman.
I am simply asking, I have no issue with decorum.
I'm going to call you out of order and ask you to please refrain.
I am simply asking specific questions with regards to the amount of staffing capacity that is currently at the Port Authority.
Senator Brown.
Because we do have specific numbers here in the bond agreement with regards to staffing patterns.
May I please ask you to refrain from speaking over the presider? I understand you're asking a question, but I'm, I'm pointing out that the discussion is becoming a little beyond the context, and we are not allowing people to finish their, their thoughts without a rebuttal and what I believe is a personal thing. So I'm going to ask you.
Well, I'm asking specific questions, Madam Chair. I'm focused on specific answers, not commentary.
I'm going to ask you to please, okay, Senator Brown, please stop talking over me. Or I'm going to ask you to remove yourself.
I would hope people would be here, Madam Chair, to properly facilitate rather than interject and cut off.
Madam Chair, if I may point of information, just answer the question.
Senator Brown and Senator Titigui, please, you're out of order.
If you could just have him answer the question as you ask us to be have decorum, I'm asking the same that you do in your capacity as a chairman, to have Mr. Rispisho just answer the questions.
Mr. Sergeant of Arms, may I please ask you to escort these two? I think that you have demonstrated extreme disrespect for the presider.
Really? For asking specific questions? Be careful. You're going to have us to be removed from asking questions with regards to public financing? Oh, no, I'm sorry. You're not going to physically remove me. I have a right to be able to ask these questions.
Sergeant at Arms, I'm going to.
I don't think the Sergeant of Arms is going to remove me.
Senator Brown, I, I would please ask you to have some respect for the chair, the presider.
Oh, we are focused on Senator Brown. We are not focused on testimony. I, I hope you're aware, Madam Chair, that this is publicly being broadcast in how you're presiding and slanting this particular hearing. I have asked specific questions of Mr. Rispisho, and I've asked specific questions of Mrs. Mendiola. It is Mr. Rispisho who wants to interject commentary.
I am trying to establish decorum here. I, I, we have talking over the presider.
I have no problem establishing decorum if you will allow me to complete asking my questions.
I'm going to ask MIS to please mute the microphones right now so that we can continue with an orderly procession of the public hearing on Bill 298-36 without discussions. And thank you. We are going to go into recess. Thank you. MIS, can we get back on the air? Let's get back on the air. Thank you. The public hearing is, is back from recess, and at this time, I would like to ask Senator Brown to complete her questioning. And may I please also request that when we speak, that we speak in, in order, that, that, that we speak one at a time, and we speak with a sense of respect. So Senator Brown, I will allow you to continue to ask your question.
With regards to legislation in 2019 on the 35th Guam Legislature, I mean, if you determined that the caps were a limitation, Mr. Rispisho, why didn't you ask for the change then? That's within the first 10 months of your, your tenure.
We not, we didn't formally ask it, but I could tell you, we had discussions and there was no appetite for it. Because exactly like what we're being put up against, we have three of these, three of the revenue bond-funded projects that have been awarded. I keep telling you, they've been awarded. The, the waterline, what's pending is the SHPO permitting requirement, the Hotel Worf, we're having a groundbreaking next week, the EQMR building, it's been awarded. We're, we're talking with the contractor now to look at those opportunities to de-scope. Madam Chair, I'm saying over and over what we're doing, but yet what you're reporting to me is that we're not connecting somehow. My answers are not sinking in, into your thinking that we have done nothing over the last three years with these revenue bond-funded projects. You, you, we talked about what ORIC's position is, Bond Council, as long as it does not materially affect the port revenue. Now, you're asking about staffing levels. We have more staff than we had when you were there. I started to point out that in 2018, the, the balance sheet for 2018 was a net negative 104,000. 2019, we made seven and a half million, paid off some liabilities, we had a net income.
Mr. Rispisho, I understand that. That's also because you're tired. You're going on. I, I'm asking, why did you not address at the original legislation, in the 35th legislature in 2019? Because you're representing to the legislature now that these, these caps are hindering. So with regards to that specific question?
Because I knew the landscape, and I knew what was going to happen at the time. There was some, you know, informal discussions with other members of the legislature to see if we can remove the cap, but everything that I've been up against as General Manager, you weren't going to give it to us.
Well, I wasn't here, Mr. Rispisho.
Well, I'm saying that in a sense that I can't just come in and say, hey, can you remove all the caps, without having any actual experiences to let you know responsibly and methodically why we have to remove the caps? Because we actually have hardcore numbers submitted by these bidders.
With regards to the waterline, you mentioned that you have bidded out that project. What were, what was the ultimate amount, since that has been awarded? What was the amount now that they are going to charge you, the contractor, for the installation of the new waterline?
The budget for the waterline was 6 million. That came in at 5.6 million.
Okay, and when will you do the groundbreaking on that project?
We would do the groundbreaking on this project as soon as SHPO gives the permitting.
Do you have an anticipated time? Will it be later this year? I mean, I understand, you can't answer for them, but when, when do you anticipate?
As soon as SHPO gives the permitting, we wrote a letter to SHPO saying that, that whole area is backfilled. They're not going to find any artifacts. I spoke to Patrick Luhon, and he's saying that it's under review, and, and that's where that project is at.
And that's the last outstanding issue government, from the government you're expecting with regards to waterline. You mentioned also EQMR. You put that out to bid. What was the ultimate bid price on that that was awarded?
3.9 million, which I said it's about 1.4 million over what the, what the, what the, what the cap is. And in order to get around the, the cap, I presented to you a board resolution that authorized me as General Manager to tap unrestricted funds, other funding sources at the port to cover over the shortfall.
Have you been able to accumulate that funding so that you could proceed with that particular bid for the EQMR building?
Obviously, we had. We found the funding because we had to go before the board to get the award. We went through PUC to get the award.
A simple yes will suffice.
Well, I, I'm afraid I just can't answer yes or no because you ask questions like a simple yes or no is not enough.
I'm just asking if the one, have you been able to find the 1.4 million? Yes or no?
Absolutely, yeah, obviously. Otherwise, the PUC want to prove it.
When, when are you anticipating this project will commence for EQMR?
We are going to do a groundbreaking for this project as soon as the contractors and I and us can come to terms with the de-scoping.
Okay, and with regards to Hotel Worf, you mentioned that, of course, that was the full funding. You have the Tiger Grant, you have the bond funding, and now you're saying you have the ARP funding. Is a full 15 million going to be dedicated to Hotel Worf?
That's what I said.
Again, I just, I'm simply asking a direct question. I mean.
I'm just wondering if you're even listening, because when I'm talking, you're not.
Mr. Rispisho, I don't need commentary. I'm simply asking a direct question.
The answer is yes, Senator Brown, and you can please come to the groundbreaking on July 6.
All right.
But can I just, the whole, just one minute, Madam Chair.
Please wrap it up, Senator Rispisho.
The whole issue is, is what we're doing here going to materially affect the port revenue? I started to say in 2018, there was a net negative loss. 2019, we made money. 2020, we made money. 2020, last fiscal year, we had a negative 2.2 net income because of the gas fee requirement to quantify 6.6 million. So paper-wise, we made 4 million, but because of the accounting wise, it brought us down to 2.2 million dollars below. Just let me finish, Senator Titigui. We stayed operational, I just share facial expressions.
Senator Rispisho, just continue. That's okay.
Thank you. So we, we stayed 100% operational during the pandemic, and I don't know what Senator Brown was saying, Madam Chair, that they had the highest rating when they let out these bonds. Those bonds were pegged at net negative in 2018. Then during the pandemic, we were put on credit watch as a precautionary measure. We came out of credit watch to stable, and just recently, that credit rating was affirmed stable. So our, our bond posture in the bond market, we're stable. Revenues are stable. We have a better position bond rating-wise than we ever did prior to the, with the inception of this bond. And if the question is, is what we're doing going to materially change the, the revenue stream of the port? It's not. It's going to enhance it. Now, we can go back and, and make the same things where we can put, update the amounts on the spreadsheet. If you want to have a legislation that updates the amounts.
I think that would be helpful of the legislature with regards to this legislation. I do, thank you.
Then you're, then you're going to show, then you'll show.
I asked a specific question. You are. I asked a specific question, I, you are continuing to elaborate.
Then you'll show 29 million dollar shortfall.
You are continuing to elaborate.
If you itemize what it takes now, you'll show 29 million dollar shortfall.
Madam Chair, I have two other comments that I, that I wanna make, because I think for the record, it's important to clarify. I don't want the impression, it seems to have been relayed here, that there was no work put in the service life extension projects with regards to F2 to F6. There was a $10 million loan that the port executed, that the port implemented, and the construction repairs were, were put in place to F2 to F6. If there's, obviously, wear and tear as a result of salt intrusion and things that would be anticipated, because these wharfs do require regular maintenance, but I, I don't like the misrepresentation that no work was done with regards to the repairs of that particular project, and actually paying that off was one of the, 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 the projects of loans that the port had that was paid off as a result of this bond, but we did have those repairs. I also want to clarify for the record with regards to this 9.9 million dollars from FEMA. Um, the, the impression somehow that, uh, you know, it was no big deal, we just asked for 9.9 million, they disapproved it, and there was no loss to the port. I mean, the, the port is very much aware, as it was from previous projects, including typhoons that we have had, what projects FEMA would or would not reimburse. And the reason this has been brought up is because we had a misreputation, unfortunately, from Mr. Cruz from FEMA on the floor of the legislature when these questions were asked, I recall, because I asked them, if there had been any projects that had been disapproved from FEMA, from any department or agency. Mr. Cruz informed us on the floor of the legislature that there were two departments that were refused or, or objections were made by FEMA with regards to compensation. One, he mentioned, was Department of Corrections, the second he mentioned was the Port Authority of Guam. The follow-up question to Mr. Cruz was, what was the amount? Mr. Cruz represented that both departments only had a $2 million rejection, only to find out from DOC on their budget hearing, that it was DOC that had a $2 billion budget rejection from FEMA, and did not disclose or represent that the Port Authority of Guam in December of 2020, November of 2020, during the last election, uh, was rejected 9.9 million dollars. So I, I think it's important to clarify that with regards to the record. I'm sure we have other questions, but we can deliberate that when we deal with the bill, and I have no further questions at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Brown, and I'd like to, at this point-
Madam Chair, just, just a clarification, and I won't belabor the issue, the 9.9 million, what that represented was the double pay issue. When we were put on lockdown, the Port Authority employees came to work. We were 100% operational. We can't move containers from the house.
Right.
We were 100% operational. The employees were asking, "Hey, how about our double pay? Boss, how come not us?" The airport gave, uh, time and a half, GPA gave double pay, Waterworks gave double pay, we need to exhaust every effort to show these employees that we're going to try. It was kicked out in the court.
Yes.
So the 9.9 million, Senator Brown, is the issue of the double pay money we never spent, money we never expected to receive, but we tried for the sake of the employees. I hope you understand that.
Thank you, Mr. Rispisho, and, and our gratitude to the port employees for all that they did, uh, during that time. Um, at this point, I'd like to call upon the main sponsor of Bill number 298-36, Senator Talina Cruz Nelson, to, um, offer her any questions or comments, and to do her, her closing statement also on this bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We see that the port is moving forward, trying to, uh, develop the port further, but, Mr. Rispisho, can you please just explain how these projects are going to impact Guam? Um, what is foreseen in, perhaps in the next five years? Things that would benefit the island or impact it in any way?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Senator, for the question. Uh, we know that Hotel Wharf is the linchpin to the whole port modernization. Hotel Wharf, when completed, it would be the home to the future cruise ship industry that the governor has established a task force with GIDE, the port, and GBB. Uh, we, we receive on average about four or five, uh, port call visits from cruise companies, cruise, cruise liners, and when these ships come, we have to rearrange the, the carrier schedules, we have to rearrange the terminal yard, uh, to accommodate that operation. So when this is completed, uh, cruise ships can berth at that facility. This is also gonna be an alternate wharf for whenever there's traffic in the main wharf, anything that can be discharged without the use of a gantry crane, roll-on, roll-off for vehicles, break bulk, that could be an alternate wharf. This is gonna be a moneymaker. We're spending money to make money, it's why I didn't hesitate to say the entire 15 million dollars will pledge into the Hotel Wharf rehabilitation, but more importantly, because of the Indo-Pacific strategy and the Pacific determinants, which you're very familiar with as a combat veteran, Madam Chair, this is gonna be a wharf that DOD can possibly use when their Navy peers get, uh, backed up in traffic, and so, um, this is really gonna be a game changer for the port. The other area where we didn't hesitate, uh, on any of our decisions was for the EQM water line, because if that water line, you know, we're, it's very critical situation. Our water lines bust every once in a while, and thankfully Guam Waterworks comes in, they service the, the leak, they bill us, we pay them. Uh, and so with this new water line, we're not gonna have that issue. I didn't approve the warehouse one, because, you know, we can live with what we have now, and that wasn't a priority for us. The condition of warehouse one, I didn't wanna put, um, 4 million dollars into it. I only want to put into these warehouses, uh, areas that will extend the service life for the safety. So with EQMR, what we found in the, in the scope of work was beyond what we need, we believe we needed. It's like the A and E was told, "Go get me a design," and there was no budget, there was no end in sight, and they came back with a design, and we just said, "Okay, let's see how much it'll cost." And so we're at that juncture now where we know how much things cost, and we know, uh, that these funding caps are not gonna get us to, to where we need to apply this money to critical areas. So 8 million for an annex building, 17 and a half million for a new administration building, that's not my priority, and that's not the priority of this administration. And so when we remove these caps and give the board the flexibility and the authority to make these decisions, then we'll take that 8 million and we can apply it to yard equipment, we can apply, you know, just, we reimburse the ARP money, that's how it'll work, the 8 million will go into the Hotel Wharf account, we reimburse those funds, relieve those funds, and then have 8 million dollars available to cover over some of the other shortfalls. We are tracking 1 million more than we projected. We have spent 1.2 million less than authorized. Last fiscal year, we spent almost 3 million less than what the board authorized us to spend. I'm be, I may be a Democrat, but I'm fiscally conservative, like my governor, she's fiscally responsible, and, and our records show it, Madam Chair, we have three years of clean audits, coming from high-risk status, three years of clean audits and no findings of significant fault. And so if you want to put me on, on trial here, that, "Hey, why are we doing this?", just let the facts and the record speak for itself, and we appreciate the support that you've given the port, um, over the last three years.
Thank you, Mr. Rispisho. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm glad that you did mention the commercial buildings, because, uh, it was my first term as Senator where we were addressing this type of bond, and my concern was, uh, the investments to be put towards, more of the, more specifically towards the area of the ports of entry, a direct impact. And so I, I, I really believe that you have made a wise decision on focusing on those areas, especially improving Hotel Wharf. And you mentioned the Indo-Pacific Command, and as the second island chain, we are look to be a main supply line for Department of Defense, and so I see that you have been working towards that and getting federal grants to help assist in the development of the port. And this is also going to, you know, assist in the boosting of our tourism, bringing in our revenue. Thank you for explaining that, because here we're talking about, um, giving you this flexibility, but we also, as a people, need to understand what this flexibility is going to bring. And so this is a, a great investment, it's a, it's a huge investment, but it's an investment that guarantees a greater return. So I thank you for your hard work, your due diligence, I thank all the employees at the port, um, for the efforts that they have made. We really see the port developing under your command, and I applaud you for your efforts and, um, continue to do the great work, and Mel, thank you for collaborating in this endeavor. It's really going to allow our island to succeed, especially when it comes into, uh, you know, the imports of all of our goods on our island. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Nelson, and, um, I just wanna, uh, thank everyone for being here, the management team also of, of the Port Authority for being here today for this public hearing. I'd like to now call the public hearing on Bill number 298-36, which is relative to the financing or refinancing improvements and capital improvements of the Jose de Leon Guerrero Commercial Port and other related facilities and operations of the port through revenue and bond proceedings. Duly heard, and this public hearing is now adjourned. It is 11:10 a.m. Sisus maasi, everyone, and, uh, have a great day. And thank you also, uh, Melanie Mendiola, Roy Rispisho, for your testimony today.
Thank you, Senator Rispisho.
Sisus maasi.